Okay, so just to remind everybody that we're being electronically recorded at this meeting as we are at every school board meeting. Now, let's talk about our consent agenda and we'll start with approval of the minutes. And Hollard, you can't hear me, okay?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular board meeting of August 13th this year.
Discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for special board meeting from August 21st of this year.
Discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so let's move on to September warrants.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrants presented.
One second. Discussion? So let's start around the table. Mr. Reynolds, did you have anything you wanted to ask about?
Uh, no, I think I've asked them. Uh, one question, I guess, seeing all our athletic accounts, we have like boys basketball and then boys basketball student. Same thing with volleyball, same. What's the difference between those two?
Between boys basketball and boys basketball student.
Yeah. Or in every category, volleyball, girls, uh, every, you have, it seems like we have volleyball and then volleyball student. And then you go on to tournament, divisionals, and states. What's the difference between those two?
Well, it's the way that the money is placed into both accounts. For like when they go to state, it's money that they were in as they were their state.
Well, we have a state here, I understand, we have a state, a divisional, and a district. My question is the difference between boys basketball and then boys basketball student? I understand when they go to district, my question is the difference between those two? In every, in girls basketball, girls basketball student, something.
The difference between the two, and Ms. Morgan, jump in and help me if you see I'm understanding this correctly. The difference between the two are that the monies are placed into the account from the equity account. That the monies are divided up equally amongst all of the accounts. So like when football or basketball do a fundraiser, their money doesn't go to them. It gets divided equally amongst each program. Now, as we place those monies into those accounts, it's for various reasons for expenditure. So like when there's fundraising, put them by the students, it can be divided up and distributed into each of those accounts.
How do you choose which one goes in basketball and then student? What's the difference between the two?
The difference between the two is dependent upon how the activity advisor wants to divide those monies up for the reasons that they see fit. Sometimes they want to keep their money separate in order to buy equipment for their program. And then monies that they're going to spend within the program for, say, um, the new student meals for, for students as they go to tournaments and stuff. So those types of expenditure, so they want to keep those monies separate.
Because we have an equity account, right?
Yes.
A Title IX equity account?
Correct. And that equity account is all fundraised money from any activity flows into that account. And then on a monthly basis, that account redistributes that money equally into the other activities.
Okay, Mrs. Cornish, did you have anything? Mrs. Rhodes? Mr. Finley?
Does this federal fund, this 215 category? If that doesn't get spent, do we keep that or what happens?
No, if you do not spend your monies, your federal grant monies, let's say Title I monies, that money will rebound to the state. So you have up until September 30th to spend those monies down or to re-airmark those and carry over into the next year. So it'll allow you to do a percentage of that money to carry over if you do not spend it down.
Well, I was just wondering, um, on page five. Page five. I'm gonna check. Number 5561, Jeff Cruz staff development, $2,250. I was only looking for our $2,250.
But what that is, that's a Title II dollars. Title II is a federal grant for professional development. Within the grant, in order to get those monies, we apply for those monies under the premise of certain training. The training that we wrote into the grant this past year was iPads in education, trying to show teachers how to utilize iPads as instructional tools in classroom and how to better enhance working with kids in classroom. We brought Mr. Cruz in with the Title II dollars in order to train the staff. And so he provided training to the staff to show them the bells and whistles of the iPad and to show how it can be utilized as an instructional tool.
That's all right.
Alright, so any further discussion? Alright, we're gonna call for the question then. All those in favor of approving the warrants?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so our next regular board meeting would be October 8th. Does that seem like it'll fit for everybody? Okay, anybody have any concerns with October 8th? Um, and our usual time's seven o'clock and we'll decide when the agenda comes out, but we'll be here across the street, so. Alright, so now we are at our regular public comment. Please remember that public comment is, at this point, is for non-agenda items. It does not allow you to talk about personnel matters or student matters. And so respectfully, I would ask for public comment at this time. If you would like to comment, please stand so that I can acknowledge you and tell us who you are.
Hi, I'm Margie O'Brien, and I'm going back to the last regular meeting when we couldn't, when the discussion was stopped at the August meeting. And that's when you three ladies voted to distance yourself from Mr. Reynolds. And I thought, because he said something that maybe something was wrong with the student activity account? Am I correct in stating that? Is that, is that why? And I thought, why would you distance himself, distance yourself from a board member when you didn't even distance yourself from John last, when all this came about? And I just thought, you know, like fools, when you didn't distance yourselves from John, but you distanced yourself from the board member. And that's all I want to say. Because we couldn't say it last month because we were shut up.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else? Alright, thank you very much. Oh, Mrs. Mackey.
Um, I don't know if we need to put this on the agenda of a future meeting and maybe people totally disagree with me, but I think I'm a little embarrassed at the things I see some of our high school athletes wearing when they get on the bus to travel to away games. Well, quite frankly, when they dress up for home games too. It seems like we have a dress code that's not being enforced. And it's kind of embarrassing.
Okay, thank you. We'll discuss that. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, so we are going to go on to correspondence. Do we have any correspondence tonight?
Uh, no correspondence at this time.
Alright, so let's move on to our 2011-2012 final audit report. And we have Kim Downey with us tonight. And we're gonna let you jump in, right?
Yes, uh, this is Kim Downey with Downey &amp; Associates of Kalispell. They have been hired to do the compliance check for the school district and have recently finished up last year's, uh, 2011-2012 audit check. So she is here today to go over this with you.
Thank you. Thank you for putting me early on the agenda. I appreciate that. I do have a drive back and an early flight in the morning, so it'd be very helpful. We weren't here to do your audit. Just this past June, we finished that up. Our purpose when we do an audit is mainly to determine whether your financial statements are fairly stated. Side purposes is we look at your internal controls, we do look at compliance. And we are required by the audit contract, which is between us, the district, and the state, to also audit enrollment and student activity. Our audit procedures are based on a risk assessment. And based on that risk assessment, that's where we gear our, our work. And then we also look at opinion units. So we have multiple opinion units. You could have the district as a whole, you could have individual funds. That would be opinion units, and we give an opinion on each unit. What I'd like to start with tonight is page 38 of the audit report. If you have that in front of you. This is where we talk about internal control and compliance issues. So you could have an internal control issue that's a significant deficiency, which means we've identified it as, um, an area that is of concern to us, and we want to report that to you. Or it could be a material weakness. And when it bumps up to a material weakness, that means potentially the financial statements could be materially misstated because of this weakness in your internal control structure. In this report, we'll have two material deficiencies and then five significant deficiencies. So on page 39, we start with the first significant deficiency related to the student activity accounts. We noted that the district was reporting ending cash balances in accounts named adult education, parking passes, student fines, and student lunch. These are activities related to regular school activities, school district operations, and they should be reported at a zero balance in the student activity. The student activity should be just shown as a, used as a flow-through because these revenues and expenses are then deposited and recorded as part of the funds of the district. The general fund, the adult ed or, um, school lunch fund. Any questions on that? So our recommendation is that the, these accounts be zeroed out at year end. They don't show revenues, expenses, any kind of balance. And then, um, a second part of that, which I didn't talk about yet, is the interest needs to be allocated. That also had a balance allocated every month, zeroed out at the end of the month.
So you're just asking questions just on the condition you're gonna carry on through then?
I wasn't gonna read the whole thing.
Oh, okay. I did, I guess, so I would have.
I was just gonna point out, these are the things we found. Our recommendation is to fix that, obviously. And then the audit, the district's response is also including there how they're going to fix that. And so they've already addressed this so that in the future, these won't be an issue. So I anticipate, um, this finding should be implemented in 2013.
So can you go, can I, can we discuss the criteria?
Sure.
This is, that's the same reason I got distanced from the board for these. I say these word for word so that you can probably help me out here a lot.
Okay.
Okay, well, let's discuss criteria.
Okay, the criteria is, there's a, the Student Activity Fund Accounting Manual in which is put out by OPI. And that manual directs districts of how they should account for their student activity monies. So it's saying that, you know, book fines, driver ed fees, adult education fees should not be part of your student activity fund.
Okay.
However, in practice, what we see in several school districts, and it usually results because of a county being such a far distance from the, the building of the school. They use the local bank, use the student activity fund to deposit that money in that month-end, move it over to the county treasurer via check. And then at year end, don't report that activity in the student activity accounts. The error here was some of that activity still remained in there. And that's what we're reporting.
So why, at the end, your recommendation is only, you understand, so you're telling me you understand why they do it, but your recommendation says here, only student functions should be included in extracurricular. You recommend they only do that, but you understand why? Is that what you're telling me?
I'm saying that year end, or even month-end, we want zeros across the board. No balance, no beginning balance, no revenues, no expenses, no ending balance. So that you're just using it for internal control purposes because...
About negative balances?
You want to be able to deposit that money daily.
Yeah, I understand that, I do.
So it's not sitting around.
So negative balances, is that, I consistently see that in there. Is that considered good?
Negative balances should be taken care of by other student activity funds.
So they should or should not be in?
They should not be in.
Okay, so...
But we wouldn't necessarily report that always, depending on the significance. If it doesn't bump up to a significant deficiency, it wouldn't necessarily be a number.
So I guess I'm, I'm still unclear on this because it, I still look through our student activity account. We have the FCPT, parents, cop, and parent teacher. We have our lunch, we have our coffee fund, we have our driver's ed fund, we have our in and out, we have our interest adjustments, lunch, lunch à la carte, FCM, SPA, all these I don't see as student functions. And they're all in our account and have been for several years. So I don't, I don't understand that you could recommend only student functions be in there, but we could continue to do it. It makes no, absolutely no sense to me.
You don't...
I've talked to Masbo.
Do you understand the internal control?
I do understand, and that's a good question because the internal control on here is pretty significant too.
Do you understand that the district cannot have any other checking accounts outside the county?
Yes, I do understand.
So what would be necessary then to keep the control? Or one of the recommendations would be to drive to the county every day to deposit the money. Does the county have a bank account at your local bank? I don't know. If they had one there, they possibly could deposit directly there. At this point, it's more improving the internal control to be able to deposit your money here locally every day. And then zeroing that out every month and not reporting the activity as part of your activity, your student activity. Usually I see it monthly flowing through, but it doesn't zero out revenue expense-wise until year end.
And you, you usually see it monthly, you say?
We'll see the activity still reported in that report that you have next to you on the right. In several districts that I audit. But at year end, they zero all that out, so they don't report it. And that was the big issue that we were concerned about here. You still are reporting this as part of your student activity account. It should not be.
Has that been a reoccurring issue with our, looked at a lot past audits? Student activity's in there for the last seven years?
Yeah, I'd have to look specifically at those. I didn't bring that one up. Can I address that to you later?
And you know, because can I address you at a later date? I got so many questions here. We could, we could be here for hours. So I'll, I'll be, I won't do that to this audience. Thank you.
Yeah, feel free to call me at any time. And I believe we want to start this 2013 audit much sooner so we don't have a report dated in June. So the sooner the better that we talk and we get started on the audit. I think it'll clarify things and show us where your concerns are and where we should focus our time.
So what you're telling us is that because we live so far from the county, which we know this, but I just want to restate this to make sure I understand what you're saying, is that so that we can have that internal control, that's why we run some of these accounts that could possibly be in our general fund through the student activity account. But the only thing that we need to do is make sure that those balances are zeroed out at the end of the month.
Yeah, you are writing it in.
So we're really no different than a lot of other schools who live a long distance from their county that need to have that internal control.
Right, you're writing a check every month to deposit those monies with the county. So that it does show up as food service, charter services, and driver's ed, adult ed, these whatever that needs to be, being reported over there properly.
So I guess I, I want to have a point of clarification. Your criteria, which is this, this Masbo official's book, which I, I know we have all seen and looked at. And supposedly OPI is handing that out as the criterion that they would use. I, I wanted to be sure that we are all clear on the idea that it is not part of Montana Code. And Masbo makes a disclaimer right at the beginning of the booklet saying that they are not intending to give any kind of legal advice on how you handle your bookkeeping. So even though you're citing this, yours, you know, you're not...
We're citing that, but also it's a student activity fund, so it's always supposed to have student activity money in it. So by definition, it's a fund.
So by definition, lunch isn't a student activity. I don't know, I'm not sure I quite, you know, so that, that's something that I don't want to debate with you.
Yeah, that's a district question.
But we can debate in the greater, in the greater, in the greater picture of it. So, um, student activity accounts can be, you know, in my, in my opinion. Now, we, Montana Code ought to clear it up if they want to see it differently, would be my suggestion.
By definition, there's Montana Code that defines the funds and what they're to be used for. We didn't cite that here. Maybe that would have been a helpful site for you as a board to say, you know, driver's ed, here's the site that says we create a driver's ed fund for this purpose.
So that is available, that is under Montana Code and T.
You can find that, those annotations where those are located in the school accounting manual, or OPI's website. And each, as you go through the chart of accounts, if there is a Montana Code that says you're gonna have this fund for this purpose, it'll be cited. Maybe they're in the definition of that one.
Thank you.
Ready to move on to number two?
The debt service fund balance, um, during fiscal year ended June 30th, 2011, the district paid off their bonds, which was excellent. However, there was still a balance in the debt service fund. And the cash balance should have been transferred to one of these other funds as defined by Montana Code 20-9-44.
I'm sorry, what page? I'm not hearing Mr. Past.
Uh, page 40.
40, okay.
So we recommend that the district close that account into the building reserve technology acquisition depreciation fund and for the general.
So you're saying state law causing, state law caused the school to be out of compliance somehow? Is that your effects?
No. We're saying that the district is out of compliance because there's a balance in the debt service fund and the debt service bonds were paid. So there's no other debt to be paid for that, um, out of that fund that you, Montana Code says, close the one. And you're given three options where you can put that.
I wish you'd come up with eighty million. That would have been even better.
I'm sorry. How many, eighty thousand?
So I was gonna say though, that...
Eighty thousand is good. I'm not complaining.
It's not like we had this fund left over when we paid off the debt service. It was from taxes that came in, protest of taxes that have been dribbling in.
Or that much.
So you have to have accounting notations for that frequently. We just were letting it sit there until we knew what we were gonna do, so.
You know, and occasionally the district's going for another bond issue right away. So why not leave it in the debt service fund in that case? But in this case, since it was 2011, we're at 2012 now, probably should have closed it out. So according to the audit response, um, they took action, the board took action to have the account closed out.
And I was just gonna say, Mr. McGee, is there a possibility that we're still gonna get dribbles in of tax money on that account?
Yeah, we could, we could end up seeing money go back into that account. And it'll just be by year's end for us to make sure that we're taking action to redirect those monies. As you'll know, these monies were already been redirected to pay for the subject training that we have currently starting out to get worked on.
So we just need to keep our eye on when that money dribbles in?
Correct.
Yeah, year end, transfer it out when that gets zeroed in. That's the easiest rather than having to do entries every month as people pay their, do their taxes. Number three, talks about the trustee's financial summary and the accounting records. When we compare the trustee's financial summary to the account, underlying accounting records, we found some financial information did not agree. Specifically, you'll see that in the effect of the areas that we could not find that, that they did not agree. Our recommendation is to make sure your trustee's financial summary is derived from your underlying accounting records. All entries are made into those accounting records, um, so the two match.
So if we're not deriving them from our accounting records, what are we deriving from?
So at year end, say you have your owed monies from a grant. And so you have to book a receivable and book the revenue. Well, if that's not entered into the accounting records, then it's kind of just off the books and put it on the trustee's report, which I can, I see occasionally, that was one of the issues here. The general entry just wasn't entered into the accounting records is what happened. That's why we say it's significant deficiency, not material. It's not like multiple entries are not entered into the accounting records. Just instances. Number four has to do with the Booster Club. There's a GASB number 39. If there's an entity that's out there, um, that its function is mainly to support the district operations. So a community nonprofit organization that goes out, raises money, gives it to Florence School District to use in their general fund however they want to or this on these programs. That's called a component unit. It could be material to your financial statements, that amount of money that they may be raising out there. You might not even know how much money is out there, but they're going to just give it to you. Those need to be reported as a component unit of your district. So we have to analyze that annually, basically get their financial statements, what kind of activity do you have going on? Is that material to their financial statements? If it is, you have to include it, should be audited as part of the audit. I hopefully bring that to GASB 39 to a level that you'll understand what I'm trying to say.
So I guess I'm gonna put on my Booster Club hat right now and challenge the, the GASB part of it where it says that you, the reporting entity has to meet all three of the following criteria. And our Booster Club doesn't meet all three.
Which, which one doesn't?
We don't really meet two and three.
All three, so the economic resources...
It says here you have to meet all three of these.
The economic resources received by that organization, so you don't, which ones don't, don't...
Well, the economic resources received.
Two and three, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm saying items two and three of the GASB that you're quoting, that, that doesn't apply, that those two do not apply to our Booster Club. Because they, the, the school does not have random access to our funds. And the material value of that, of the funds that gets donated to the school is miniscule in the total scheme of the, in the total scheme of the budget. They do not plan in any way or budget in any way around these donations made to the Booster Club. And it, and also, we are not technically a 501(c)(3). So we are not technically...
What kind of organization are they?
Well, good question.
What's your tax ID number?
We, we have a tax ID number, yes, we do.
Separate from the district?
From, separate from the district, yes, we do.
Okay, so, not sure what kind of entity you are, but that's another question.
Honestly, we need some help with that, but, um, and...
Where, where else?
I dropped out of accounting in college for a reason and went into general business, but I, I don't see how we, that we qualify or that, that we are all three of these items that then would insist...
Does the Booster Club use their money for any other purpose? Do they give it to, um, the telephone, Lolo School District? Is it mainly to support? Is it mainly to support?
Supports athletic item, period. That's all we do.
Just athletics here at the district?
Yep, we don't, we don't support, uh, we don't support academics, we don't support choir, we don't just, and we, we provide scholarships. And we provide additional funds.
Oh, so students for college?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry, only, um, Aket, are we sports scholarship?
Yep.
No academic?
Nope.
So I think-
Well, to qualify for the scholarship, you have to have been, you have to have participated in high school in two sports. And then there's a list of other things that you've done, but if you didn't participate in two sports, you're pretty much not gonna get considered for the applicant, for the scholarship, no matter what.
So that's fine. So our point here is the district needs to address, is this booster club a component unit or not? If it's not a component unit, they need to define that so that it doesn't come into question.
So how do we get to that, can I ask? Cause I, I, then I'll put my school board hat back on, how do we get to that?
I think just to-
That we define them?
Just to analyze what the activity of the booster club is, where the money is going, is it, is it a district, um, component unit or not?
Okay.
So if you've gone through these and said, this applies because of this, this doesn't apply because of this. Then as a board, you can probably make that definition.
Okay.
I don't want to see the booster club then later maybe building the grandstand and that becomes a district asset that they're going to have to, um, maintain, ensure, anything like that. Now you've stepped over the bounds.
Okay.
It needs to be a component unit because you're giving them assets.
Right, right, okay.
Directly to the, the district that they have.
Yeah, see, that, that's clearer and a different deal than what we're doing, so, right, okay, all right.
Exactly. So I think it's more of a clarification issue than anything else.
Okay.
Um, number five. Part of our internal control, um, we noted adjusting journal entries, we call them journal vouchers, were not approved, reviewed and approved by a member of management. So what we like to see is, um, person that's in charge of the accounting system, if they're gonna have to make an adjusting entry to the accounting system. It's supported, it's looked at either by the superintendent or even the board as a whole. Those are approved so that somebody else is looking at those adjusting journal entries and say, let's make sure nothing else is happening to our accounting records that maybe they're being manipulated in some way, so it's a double check. We don't want somebody to be able to make adjustments, you know, to your accounting system and nobody else be aware of it.
So we're currently not doing that?
As been due to fiscal year 2012, we operate thirteen.
Um, and when you say governing body, you say it could be either, either superintendent or school board?
However, the district wants to set that up. We want another set of eyes. Um, we're not gonna direct you specifically as to how your internal control procedures, we can only recommend. We're gonna move on to number six. And number six has to-
I'm sorry, can I just say one more thing about number five? Having somebody else look at those adjustment entries then actually is, um, a safeguard for the person who has to make those.
Definitely.
It, it's a, you know, it's a safety issue for the person who has to be responsible for making those.
Yeah, if it were me, I would definitely want another set of eyes looking at whatever I'm doing. Otherwise, something happens, all the fingers get pointed at me, I'm the only one.
Could have done that.
Right. You would think so. Um, so I would think, you know, anybody in that position would feel comfortable. Uh, number six, miscellaneous programs fund. Trustee's financial summary is reporting fifty-one thousand eight hundred some odd dollars as due to other governments. And a forty-three thousand six hundred and three as a restatement of the beginning balance in the miscellaneous programs funds. We could not verify that these numbers were accurately reported. Because of that, we're saying, um, first, your accounting records should, your trustee's financial summary should be derived from your accounting records. And any amount in there should be able to be documented as to why it's there. However, because we could not verify those numbers, miscellaneous program was what we consider a major fund, its own opinion unit. We had to qualify the opinion for that fund to say it was not fairly stated in this respect. So due to other governments restatements, we couldn't verify that, so we don't know whether that's fairly stated, so we're not gonna say it is.
So when you say due to other governments?
Means you owe money to OPI or something.
Correct, okay. So again, you're, the cause is that this was not derived from accounting records, is that correct?
Um, yes, that's... Basically, we could not support that from the accounting records or other documentation. And the opinion unit's fairly small for that miscellaneous programs fund, the amount makes that materiality a lot smaller than when you go to district like. Any other questions on number six?
Well, real quick, so I get, I see your recommendation again, derive it from accounting records, and we're, our response is that we're gonna send Genie to get additional training so we don't make this mistake, and just have work with that fact. Genie, is your background, um, accounting, are you a certified?
I'm not a CPA, and I was only here for four months of this year.
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying that at all.
But it was ongoing. Yeah, but the grants are a separate situation to begin with, it's a whole new world. You have grants you have due to, from governments because of the amount of expenditures that are allowed within that grant. So doing the TFS and trying to incorporate the county records, and if prior year numbers were not reversed like they should have been for to and from other governments, that creates another hazard, so we did sit down, um, John Paul came out for venue downing. We got things in order and, um, hopefully we're putting out those project protocols I was talking about to help drive the revenues to the expenses for each of those grants, because it's almost like many statements within the grants. Many financial statements, I should say, so.
Yep.
And I don't know if this will help, but if you have a grant and you've spent, this is for fifty thousand dollars, you've spent forty-nine thousand dollars. You have to record forty-nine thousand dollars in revenue and a receivable. So, um, on the other hand-
It's a complex deal.
Yeah.
Grants really are developed by themselves, so.
On the other hand, if you've received money and you haven't spent it, then you have to show it as a due to other governments. If the grant ended, but you're, and you've had to return that money.
You should have had its own rules on what you spend it on and all those things, you'd be classifications for that if there's not-
And this coding, why you get the money?
Yeah, it's, it's a complex issue.
Okay.
Um, number seven has to do with capital assets. We noted accumulated depreciation was understated approximately a hundred and ninety-two thousand when we did a recalculation. And then when we tested your claims, which is your warrants, we noted another hundred and eighty-seven thousand in assets that were purchased, but they weren't included as capital assets, but they met your definition. And then an amount reported in the current year capital asset additions was actually encumbrances of a hundred and seventy-two thousand. So an encumbrance is not recorded as an asset because you just ordered it, you haven't received it. So until that, that good, when a huge copy machine shows up here, it's not an asset, even though you record it as an obligation that year. So because these errors ended up being materially stated of the capital assets, we also qualified, in your opinion, for the government-wide financial statements in relation to capital assets, saying that they were not fairly stated. Any questions on that?
So again, our, obviously our effect would be that it's misstated by five hundred and fifty-two thousand.
Exactly.
And then our, I understand your recommendation, and again, will additional training need with Genie?
Well, actually, yeah, for office, for coding, because according to policy, anything over five thousand dollars is a capital asset. By getting this code, you have to go back and look for it, so that's something that we're staying on top of for this fiscal year.
So I stated at the beginning, our purpose was to determine if your financial statement, so that was our main purpose. Are your financial statements fairly stated? Financial statements are fairly stated, except for this miscellaneous programs fund issue that we talked about and the capital assets. Everything else we, we determined was materially fairly stated. Any questions on that?
So this should conceivably be reconciled then the next time you audit?
I would think so. Yeah, I think, um, Genie has a very good understanding of what needs to be done. She's received training to get to the point where it needs to be, and those should be corrected for 2013. So we'd like to get in here, you know, this fall to get that started, um, so that I could report back to you both finish December, January and say, here's where we are now. Um, as far as compliance, we also report on compliance, we don't have any compliance issues, that's compliance with laws, contracts. That we know. Any other questions?
I have a ton of questions, but I'm not gonna go there, so I'm gonna save it to-
Please, please feel free to call me.
Right, thank you very much, um-
Go out to, to visit with you?
Can I ask you one real quick question, which kind of applies to our next, um, topic, um, is reading through your, uh, the future of the school districts?
Management discussion and analysis, that section of the audit report you're looking at is prepared by district management. It's required to be put into the audit report. There's only certain things that can be put into the audit report. We, um, don't give an opinion on it, but we do verify numbers. And we make sure that items are not included in there that aren't allowed to be included. So it has to be very specific as to what-
Colby, what page is that, that you're looking at there?
Six.
Page six, okay.
That should be two through six would be your management discussion and analysis.
Yes, my, my last simple question is, uh, I'm looking at the, the pages thirty-six, thirty-seven of our, uh, the, the copies in here of our student activity account.
Uh-huh.
Is there a read, uh, and this may not be a question for you, they're reading girls' basketball, what am I gonna? No, it, I don't know, is this just a, is this just a, it just doesn't look like the amount of normal activity counts that we have in it. We only have, I think we're up to like a hundred and twenty, but this only has, is there a reason for that? Do you know that? I don't know.
I, I would have to look further into it, but we're giving, giving the district summary for the year. Um, and that's what we report on.
So the district resupply you with all your information that you audit?
Yeah.
Everything supplied, do you ask for additional information?
And then we look at the backup information. We do confirmations, we do analytical tests, um, things like that to determine, are those numbers fairly stated?
So it's really a compliance report, is that accurate in that?
It's a financial audit.
Financial audit. What's the difference between what we're seeing here and say you were to, uh, what's a different type of audit, say you were to go into like some-
Performance audit, which would go into, um, how are you performing, how are the students performing on test scores?
So something like that. What, what's, what's, what's a forensic audit?
Oh, not very much, no.
No?
Forensic audit would be the district's identified something specific potentially in which they, uh, feel that there's been some fraud or mismanagement of funds.
And then you go in and look at one particular, but not the entire, like you did as a whole?
It depends.
All right.
Um, basically what you want to know is as specific as. An example of, in the St. Regis School District years back, um, superintendent came across a credit card payment in a grant fund over the summer, and she went, this doesn't look like the, the grant expenditures or the support for it. Threw up a red flag for her. She started looking at the accounting system and identified that potentially they had some credit card vendors out there that she was under.
We was around six hundred thousand, if I remember that story well, so-
Over seven years.
Right, so, so how could a, a school district over a seven-year period have a, have this done and that happen?
That's a good question.
So I, I mean, if my question is, that's, so I think you see where I'm going here, I, I, I just, I just question how total and depth this really looks in.
It should be identified in the risk assessment.
Right, gotcha.
So as you're, as an auditor, you go through and you do inquiries, you do analytical tests, you don't understand, you know, when you look at the vendor list, you're like, who is this vendor A, B, C? You know, if it's the kind of initial, maybe you want to question that. Some of those are pretty common in school, the test vendor, um, you know, the failure, or school had, possibly had that vendor. They'd use for student co-cases, student purposes. But the risk assessment should identify.
I guess can anyone answer my question, why are the girls' basketballs not in this? I would have to look into it.
Okay, um-
Any other questions?
Sorry, I was gonna say, are you, are you, did you have more you wanted to tell us?
I think I'm done.
Okay, well, let us get to a motion so that we can have discussion if anybody else wants to ask any more questions. All right, can I have a motion on accepting the audit report?
I'll make a motion to accept the 2011, 12 final audit, audit report as presented.
One second.
All right, so discussion. Mr. Barris?
Just a question on the, um, that miscellaneous fund, could you put those in, like the drivers and lunch in the general fund? And does the school have capability of transferring electronically? Like, I know to the IRS you can do that. Is that a possibility with the, uh, Ravel County?
I think what we're talking about is more cash collections.
Well, I know, but if you had it in the general fund, it wouldn't show up in the, what is it, the activity fund or whatever? So if you had specific lines in the general fund for, what is it, the drivers or whatever it might be?
They have separate funds for school lunch and-
In the general fund?
No, separate funds, so you have general fund, driver's ed fund, school food service fund. But the, the issue is, the reason is the county is in Hamilton, the county seat, that's where we have to deposit.
I'm just asking, and maybe, is there electronic transferring to that at all, or do you guys do that?
No.
Okay, just asking a question.
I guess that was my question, that's a, still, still very unclear on the line.
All right, any, any other discussion?
I guess my discussion, I, I just, you know, I'm gonna, need more, more time on this. I mean, I, I went through and redlined this for as much as I could through the week, I mean it, there's a lot to go through here to, to be getting your board packing on Saturday and making a call on, uh-
Well, I was gonna say too, electronically, boy, the rest of the world could get on that, but if schools get on that, we're all gonna be dead before that happens because things happen so slow at school. Um, that would just be how I see it, but I think it's a great idea.
But don't they, um, I'm just asking, do you do that with social security when you do payroll and, really?
No, they've done it, I've been applying to them, a procedure's been done in the past, and they've done a live phone call.
Okay.
So we go down to the bank each month after payroll, deposit the payroll taxes, and then we call it in, and it's withheld the next day, taken out of the account.
So we, the school does no electronic?
No, not at this point in time. They haven't. I've been here just a year and a half, like I say, so I'm just trying to get the protocol and following procedure. When I go to the Masbo conferences, their vices, you follow everything the way it has been. Same thing with the financials, so that's why things have been done that way, now we're being clarified on certain areas to tighten the, the reins, I guess you'd say.
Maybe suggest we look into that, I don't, I don't think I could run my business doing it any other way, but that, that's definitely something we should probably take a hard look at.
All right, so any other discussion on accepting the, uh, budget report? All right, call for the question, all those in favor of accepting the budget report? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. And we will be seeing you sooner this time than usual.
I hope so.
Yeah.
We'll see you later.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on to out-of-district students, um, Mr. McGee.
Okay, we have three out-of-district student applications, uh, a couple of the students have attended Florence Carlton School for several years and have now found themselves to have moved out. We have Kylie McKinnon, uh, is she here tonight with her parent? Uh, she has applied to stay in the district, although she's out of district now, so her application before you- And he is also been to Florence School for a number of years, and is now out of district and has his application for the board. And finally, we have Keaton Jaggers, non-resident student application. Keaton is a student who attends the Lone Rock School, and we will probably need to go into an executive session to discuss the details of Keaton's application, so.
I guess I wanna ask if Kylie, or is it Tynan, if you guys would like to have executive discussion, executive session, which means it's just you and the board, or would you like to go ahead and continue and open your choice?
You can continue.
Okay, you guys will continue, okay. So, can I have a motion for Tynan, or...
I'll make a motion to accept Kylie, call Tynan.
Well, either one, I'm fine, either one.
Motion to accept Kylie, McKinnon's non-student, non-resident student application.
One second.
Discussion?
Can we just know what grade that...
Oh, grade twelve. So, any further discussion?
No, I get tired of this question, it's, it's third time asked, is the cost of educating a student available to me? You'll ever see that?
Yes.
Maybe by an board meeting before we let in any more district, out-of-district.
Alright, any further discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright.
Opposed?
Sorry, missed me.
I'm sorry, opposed, okay.
I'll make a motion to accept Tynan Heck's non-resident student application.
One second.
Discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah, it's grade twelve.
And that's also grade twelve, and so I wanna say thank you for coming and welcome, and you know that now that you're an out-of-district student, you're held to a little bit higher standard, so keep in touch with Mr. Robaska if you've got any questions about that. And you may go if you want, or we'd be happy for you to stay. Alright, so, let's move on to...
Keaton.
Keaton. Is Keaton's family here?
Keaton's at home, I'm here.
Okay, do, would you like us to have executive session?
Whatever the board feels comfortable with.
I...
It's your call.
It's, it's your call, but we certainly wanna offer that to you.
No, we're fine, there's no sense in everybody getting up and moving.
Okay, alright.
Keaton is a student with some profound disabilities, and he attended the Florence Carlton School last year, but there were costs associated with his attendance, and he moved back to the Lone Rock District. The Lone Rock District has since approached the Florence Carlton School to discuss whether we could take Keaton in under our special ed program, given his significant disabilities and the strings that it would cost on their system. We have taken a look at the costs associated with Keaton coming to the school, and we have outlined those costs for the Lone Rock District. At this time, we are talking about two and a half hours of educational time by an instructor, we're talking the cost of hiring a one-on-one aide, we're talking about the cost of a nurse for thirty minutes a day with the student, we're talking about a special education bus route that would transport into the Lone Rock School District to pick this child up. Those costs all escalate well above forty thousand dollars, that would, it would cost the Florence Carlton School District to have Keaton in, in the school. Now, last year when Keaton attended, we had the rule within the program where we did not have to hire additional personnel on, but at the beginning of this year, we identified that we would have these additional costs if he were to maintain in the school district. So, at this time, the Jaggers have approached us, been very interested, because they were very happy and satisfied with the education that their child was receiving here, to maintain his attendance, but will require action by the Lone Rock School Board. And the Lone Rock School Board has been given, well, their superintendent has been given the information about these costs, and so, if you were to approve his out-of-district attendance application, it would be upon the condition that the Lone Rock School District approved the special ed bus driving into their district to pick the child up, and also approving to pay for all the extraneous costs above what it would normally cost us to have a child here at the school. Anything you'd like to add?
Me?
Yeah.
No, you know, Keaton had a great experience here last year, he did have some health issues, but as far as the school goes, I mean, we couldn't have been happier. We don't really, as long as Lone Rock also not really wanting to deal with it, we don't really feel safe having him there, like we do having him here, and if they're willing to pay for everything, I just hope that you accept him as a student.
So, should we, do we need to have a motion before we have a whole bunch of discussion here, or can we talk, can we talk before we get to the motion?
Do you like to have a motion?
We better have a motion then, so that we can talk. Is that okay?
Okay, I'll move that we accept Keaton Jaggers as a student for the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year.
On the condition?
With conditions.
On the condition that Lone Rock puts in their financial contribution at the best, in the best.
Do we have room?
Yes, we do, we have room.
We have personnel.
We'd have to hire additional personnel.
And that would be what they would be paying.
For those costs. And remember...
I need a second, I'm sorry. Okay, now we can continue the discussion, I'm sorry.
Now, I have a question, so Lone Rock has said that they will contribute the funds?
The superintendent has said that it's a very viable option, because they, they see that, we have a nurse on our staff, we have the staffing in place, we deal with the issues of the very significantly profoundly disabled students very well. In their district, they don't have the same resources available, so they would have to recreate these resources, and it would be significantly expensive for them to do so. For example, we know from our experience with Keaton that it requires the nurse to be present with him three times a day for about ten minutes each time, to do some vital checks and to do some other types of activities with him within medical. That's thirty minutes a day, those are costs which attribute directly to him and charge the Lone Rock District. If Lone Rock were to try to provide that same service, they wouldn't be able to hire a professional to come out for just thirty minutes a day, there would be the travel and expense of bringing that person out, and it's not just a thirty-minute block at one time, it's at three separate times during the day. So, they recognize that there, there would be a, a more significant cost, where we have identified it at about fifteen hundred dollars is the cost that we would have for the year. They know that it'd be far greater than that for them to enter into a contract with some healthcare provider to be available to provide that service. So, there, there are advantages to Lone Rock bringing that child here, that would be a cost savings to their district. But it depends, I mean, I'm not gonna speak for the Lone Rock School Board, I mean, they have their own issues with their budget and what they need to do to manage, and they might come up with a plan that they feel as though they can provide the services, and if they do, then more power to them, but I have been requested to bring this forward to see whether or not this would be an option that they could then take back to their school board, and in a couple of weeks, their school board will then try to take action with whether they would like to enter into this agreement or not.
So, could my motion be amended to say until we recognize the, the workings of the Lone Rock School District in this child's case, that he remain in Lone Rock then, I mean...
Well, he will, he, it's conditioned, I mean, they will not met the conditions yet, and until their board actually needs and takes action, he will not be able to attend school here, so.
Alright, so, Mill, you had some discussion.
Well, I was under the impression the Bitterroot Valley Co-op handles some of this kind of thing. Am I, am I wrong?
Well, we belong to the Bitterroot Valley Co-op, it's a special education co-op, but what it does is it provides services in terms of, it, it provides us the speech therapists, the occupational therapists, you know, those types of staff members in our school, and so, we have some of that, we have some of the mental health that comes in, and so, although they're the employees of the, of the co-op, they come in to us. Now, when you start talking about that, Lone Rock belongs to the Bitterroot Co-op also, but they don't have like a nurse employed with the co-op, and so, they can't assign a nurse there. They could create it, but then if they create that position, then they would have to add that cost on to Lone Rock's bill in terms of what it would charge Lone Rock for that service. With that being said, though, that, that's a good question, because I think that there's probably gonna be a lot of exploration by the superintendent and the director of the Bitterroot Valley Co-op to explore other avenues in order to try to keep that child in the Lone Rock School District. So, it may come back that they look at our costs and say, that's a little rich, we could do this better by doing this, and decide to provide services in that district.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a special, special circumstance here. Whether or not they, if I remember right, it's eighty thousand dollars, our, our share of the cost there?
Correct.
Spend, there's about six, I mean, whether or not they use all that money, or do they have some money to create this position, this co-op?
Well, that's our money, that, that's our money, we pay into there, and that money is, that we pay in is in order for us to receive the services that we receive. So, we receive, you know, like, the OTPT, you know, mental health, we have those services that their employees come in and serve our students with, the psychologists and stuff, so that is primarily for us. Lone Rock also pays a fee to belong to that co-op, so they're paying into it also, and they're getting certain services as a result, and that's what I mean, they, Lone Rock could have an escalated cost in services in order to have the greater staffing.
So, it would be up to the co-op to decide whether they're gonna have a nurse on staff?
Well, that's it.
Yeah.
Do we keep the eighty thousand, or we just give it to them?
No, we, we pay that eighty thousand every year to belong.
Okay, so, it's really the co-op to see if they get the word to do something with this child.
Well, it's up, it's up to...
And the co-op might come back and save to Lone Rock, and this is, you know, that's their discussion between the co-op and that district, you know, now that we've got these extra costs that you're requiring services from us, we're going to have to charge your district, and so, your participation in co-op will be a higher bill than it has been, and that's how that would work.
But it, it doesn't affect our price?
It wouldn't affect our cost to belong to the co-op.
No, no. I'm just thinking of a way to get it done.
Great, sure. Okay, so, any other discussion? Mr. Paris?
Just Doug let in two students tonight into high school, which I think with A and B money is about six thousand dollars a student, and I think according to the conversation last month, there's about ninety out-of-district students here the school's quota will pay for. Well, on average, ninety kids, it's sixty, six thousand dollars. I think the school maybe can have some heart, and if this child needs some help, come on.
Okay, thank you for that. Anybody else? Okay, so, let's call for the question, and shall we be sure that we're clear on what the motion is?
The motion was to allow Keaton Jaggers in the thirteen, fourteen school year, on the premise that, that the Lone Rock School District will provide additional funds along with this school bus to transport him from. Is that correct?
Okay, so, all those in favor of the motion? Aye. Alright, so, good, alright. So, we will follow up with, we'll follow up with Lone Rock, we'll all be in touch, and we'll see what they decide to do, okay?
Wonderful, I'm, I'm almost a hundred percent positive that they just, you know, they're, they're gonna end up paying you guys, because, you know, they're just, they don't wanna do it.
Well, and we'll, you know, we know you had, we know you had a good experience here, and we, you know, we'll roll from that, alright?
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, and you can stay or go as you choose, if you'd like, so...
Can you take me out this way?
Alright, you can.
Thank you.
Okay, so, on to the State Board of Public Education. Mr. McGee, would you like to talk about that a bit?
Well, on September twelfth, which is Thursday, in Billingsboro, Montana, the State Board of Public Education will be holding their bi-monthly meeting, and on the agenda is possible disciplinary action against my certification. The Office of Public Instruction at this time is recommending a reprimand be placed into my certification file for immoral conduct related to the teaching profession, for the case of plagiarism that the Florence Carlton School Board investigated and reprimanded me for March eighteenth. At this time, the Office of Public Instruction has not contacted this school board, and has very little understanding as to how this matter was handled by the local school board. At this time, I'm asking the school board to review a resolution as presented in a board packet, and present this resolution to the Montana Board of Public Education in order to help them in their deliberations on this matter. So, what I am asking the board to do is to take a look at a resolution that has been created, and if they feel so inclined to go ahead and appoint a representative of the board, Nikki Cornish, to go down and to present this resolution and requisition to the Board of Public Ed. With that being said, Ms. Morgan, would you like to read that resolution out to us?
It's over here.
Yes.
The resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Florence Carlton School District fifteen dash six, Ravelry County, Montana, September tenth, two thousand thirteen. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Florence Carlton School District fifteen dash six, Ravelry County, Montana, the board is aware that the Superintendent of Public Instruction by letter dated April twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen, requested that the Montana Board of Public Education issue a public reprimand to John McGee, the district superintendent. Whereas the board recognizes the statutory authority of the Superintendent of Public Construction to request such a reprimand, and the authority of the BPE to issue such a reprimand, the board wishes to express its concern about this request, and the effect it would have on the board's authority to supervise this district and its personnel. Whereas the board engaged John McGee by his own initiative, brought to attention the board's chairperson and vice-chairperson, that he had plagiarized articles in the district's newsletter, The Falcon View, the fact that he self-reported the issue was an important consideration for the board in this context. Whereas a thorough investigation was conducted into those allegations, the board determined that Superintendent McGee had in fact copied content into newsletter articles without properly giving credit to the original author. The board determined that such conduct, which conduct was a violation of District Policy five-two-two-three, concerning the personal conduct of our personnel, it cannot be tolerated, and because it brought negative attention to the district and caused, caused the public to lose faith and trust in the superintendent's leadership. Whereas the board determined that Superintendent McGee had otherwise a very clean work history with the district, and was an effective and successful education leader in the community. Whereas the board directed Superintendent McGee to write a public apology, to be printed in the school newsletter, write a letter of apology to the original author, write a letter of correction, and to apologize to the district's staff and students. Superintendent McGee satisfied those requirements before March eighteenth, two thousand thirteen. Whereas on March eighteenth, two thousand thirteen, the board considered the issue of termination of the superintendent's employment, which was rejected by the board by vote of one to four, the board instead issued a letter of reprimand to be placed permanently in his employee file. The board also suspended Superintendent McGee's duties without pay for ten days from March twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen. The board instead issued a letter of reprimand to be placed permanently in his fa- employee file. The board also suspended Superintendent McGee's duties without pay for ten days from March twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen, to April fifth, two thousand thirteen, which suspension without pay resulted in economic loss in excess of thirty-five hundred dollars to Superintendent McGee. Whereas the board warned Superintendent McGee that any further demonstration of deficient performance could result in additional discipline, including discharge from employment. Whereas the board remains convinced that Superintendent McGee learned a very difficult lesson in this experience and turned the experience into a teachable moment for students and staff of the district. Whereas the board believes that this matter has been effectively addressed at the appropriate level of school government, governance in Montana. And whereas the board is concerned that this issue has become or is being used by certain community members to rebut, review, reverse, or otherwise render ineffective the board's authority in action in this matter. Therefore, be it resolved that the board opposes the Superintendent of Public Instruction's request of the BPE and requests that the BPE reject the recommendation and take no further action on this matter. The board expresses dissatisfaction with Superintendent McGee's response to his violation of professional standards and district policy and in particular appreciates that Superintendent McGee communicated the significance of this error to the district's staff and students and took the opportunity to teach each senior level English class that plagiarism is inappropriate and will not be tolerated. The board endorses Superintendent McGee's leadership in our district and in our community and expresses his intent and desire to maintain his employment as superintendent for the maximum period of time allowed under Montana law.
Okay, so that we can have some discussion here, I guess, any other motion?
I'll move to pass this resolution as read by Mrs. Morgan.
Second. Okay, so let's have discussion, and I'll start with you, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you. Who drafted this?
I did.
You did? Guess I have a number issues with this, um, I'm not going to get back into the case of all what happened and that's been discussed enough. But, uh, you keep saying the board, the board, the board, I, I mean, I don't, I think this is a personal issue and it always wa- and it always was. Not sure why the district's stepping in here. And by, I, by no means do I want my name on this letter. I don't, I sit in the way, I, I've seen it, I think everybody's aware of my, uh, how I stood on this issue prior to me being a board member. Very much against sort of plagiarism in a, in a activity or in a school environment, so, I don't, I, I don't, I do not agree with this whatsoever.
Okay. Mr. Finley, did you have anything?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to stay where I was before. I was against it then and it, and it's, it's worded right in here, could not be tolerated. And I don't, I still don't think it can be tolerated. And, uh, the board, the whole board is not going to be in agreement on this, I'm not in agreement.
Okay. Vicky, did you have any comments?
I do. Uh, my concern, I, I, I'm in support of the resolution. And this happened before Mr. Reynolds was on the board, there was a four-one vote to, um, handle the discipline the way we did. My concern with, um, us having to even come up with the resolution in this particular hearing that, um, that I feel it's necessary that we be represented at is the fact that, um, we have some individuals in our community that want to take the local control from this board trustees. Because as far as I'm concerned, this board of trustees did our job. We get our due diligence. We investigated, we reprimanded, we disciplined, and we moved on. And we, we had, we had an open meeting with our community, we had both pro and con that spoke in favor and against Mr. McGee. My concern, and not just as a trustee from the state of, from, from Florence, but a trustee in the state of Montana, in the fact that, um, if a, if a board trustee, board of education in that particular, in your particular district, does follow policy, does do what they have been elected to do, that all of a sudden we have Big Brother coming down and telling us that, that we don't have the control. Which we do have the control from the state constitution to handle our issues within our district if we follow through and do what we're supposed to do, which we did. And so, my concern is, not that I'm putting aside what brought us to this position, but my position right now is that I think as a, as, as a board, we need to go speak to the Board of Education, the Office of Public Instruction and say, "Hey, you know, we're doing our job. You have not even made one phone call, made one investigation into how we handle this particular situation." And they have not done their due diligence. And so, I want, I want the, the opportunity to present my, that particular issue as a trustee in the state of Montana. Trustees volunteer hundreds and hundreds of hours that are not paid. Not because they are concerned that they don't get paid, they do it because they believe in the education for our students in the state of Montana. And, and, and we are given that, that ability to do that. And if all of a sudden we have two or three individuals that are concerned with that particular, um, motion or issue or how it was handled in a particular situation enough that they would take it to the higher level, then if in fact the Office of Public Instruction or the Board of Education decides to offer this reprimand, then they have opened themselves to a whole, a whole kettle of worms as far as all the other trustees in the state of Montana. They are not going to be, they don't want to be, um, have, have their ability to control in their district taken away from them. Why, why, why do they run, why do we volunteer all the time that we do to make sure that our district is handled in an efficient manner to have somebody turn around and tell us, "Oh, no, you didn't do that right", when in fact we did do it right? So, I want to go. I think this resolution is good.
Mrs. Rhodes?
I agree with her. I, um, I worked here for twenty-five years, I worked for five superintendents here once. That and the time I've been on the board, we have had some issues come up with superintendents in the past that were much more serious than this. And it was handled by the board of this district. And we were elected to do a good job for people and that's exactly what we're doing. And I resent the, the idea that, that somebody jumps the chain of command, goes over our head, goes to Helena, tells tales on their side of it, and Helena doesn't check with us to see what's going on. I, I don't, I think it's terrible, the idea that Helena would come in and come over our head. I mean, we're doing, we're doing what we were elected to do and we've handled this. We, we did everything we needed to do and it's done. And I think all the furor that's been going on about it has, has hurt, has made it, has made it hard for us to conduct business in the district. And I think that, I think we handled it right and I'm, I'm glad Vicky's going. If I was going to be here, I'd want to be over there too.
Alright, so my turn before I open it up to the floor. I really feel again that we, um, that the board took decisive action. Not everybody agreed with the outcome of the action, but we took action. And the, uh, the reprimand letter will follow Mr. McGee and his employment jacket as long as he works in the state of Montana and probably beyond. So, um, I don't think anybody can say that we didn't take action. They can say that they didn't agree. So, what, where we're at now is, um, before Mr. Reynolds actually ran for the board and got elected to the board, he and a couple of other community members, uh, started this, uh, this business by taking the, uh, beha- the, the issue to the Office of Public Instruction uh, and the, and requesting that it have a hearing before the, um, Board of Public Education.
Wait a minute, you, where do you get that information?
Um, and so, that, uh, so I don't think that everybody knows that. Um, and so, I find it interesting that, um, that I think if people did know that, they may have not voted the same when they voted in the election. And that's neither here nor there at this point. So, here's the thing. Mr. Reynolds and his, uh, additional complainants in this case, because you're not going to own up to the fact that you started this, are you going to own up to that?
Did you say I went to OPI and asked him for this?
I, I say that you, I'm saying that you went to OPI with a complaint.
Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Okay? So, whether he agrees to own up for that or not, that'll be up to, that'll be up to everybody to decide. So, here's the thing as I see it, I'm with Mrs. Cornish. Um, OPI is talking, uh, all the time about local control and they run a huge dance during the legislature to try to keep the legislature from infringing on, on local control. And they're all the time making the dance to see whether, uh, keeping the feds from trying to infringe on local control. So, now they're talking out of both sides of their mouth. I find that egregious. Um, and again, whether you agree with this act, whether you agree with how we got here, why we got here, any of that. But that's the thing that, that's a problem. And as Dorothy said, we've had, uh, people here who had to be escorted off the property for misconduct. And OPI wouldn't look into it. And that teacher's still teaching. Um, so, I find that egregious. So, um, that's just my personal opinion and I can't go to Billings on Thursday because I have to be out of town for my job, otherwise I would be there. So, the thing about it is, whether if you, whether you, you know, whether you like John, whether you don't like John, whether you feel like it was, you know, beyond something that you can get around. Do we want the state meddling in local control, which is our Montana constitution, given right to deal with our issues here? That's more of an issue about than whether you like John or whether you dislike what he did, in my opinion, okay? Everybody can form their own opinion. But I certainly would like for people to look at it with an open mind and really research the facts. And as Vicky said, nobody's called me to ask what was done. Nobody's called any of the rest of us on the board except for whatever miscommunication that Mr. Reynolds has had in his request to get this started. So, you guys can take it or leave it for that. Uh, and I certainly would ask that you would support us as a board, um, that we have taken some action and that we are trying to conduct the business of our school, which the end game is, this is about what's best for the kids. If your end game is anything else, then you shouldn't be, you shouldn't be here. You should be someplace else trying to do something else for somebody else. But if you're not here because you are in, that you believe in public education and that you believe in what's best for the school, then I'm sorry, I'm not going to be able to work with you really well. So, that's just my personal opinion. So, now, I'm going to open it up to discussion as I call on you from the audience, Ms. Briney.
My name's Carrie Briney and I teach here at the school. I've taught here for seven years. And sort of what Pat say was, said was a segue into what I was going to say. We need to remember that this is about the kids and the teachers and the staff and the community and the board. It's not personal vendettas and things like that. And Mr. McGee has been a great superintendent, I feel, for us. I've taught for fourteen years, I've had two others. And I feel like all this is doing is bringing the community in general down and we need to work together as a staff and a, and kids and community and move on. And I'm saying that personally, my opinion, that's how I feel.
Thank you. Tell me who you are.
I'm Judy Sass and I just wanted a clarification in the resolution. I'm having a real problem hearing back for some reason. But I believe the last couple of paragraphs were where my question was. I think Mr. Finley alluded to it, although I couldn't tell for sure. But the part where it said something about plagiarism will not be tolerated? Is that, was I hearing that correctly in there?
Could not be tolerated, it says. Could not be tolerated.
And who said that? I mean, who's saying that?
Well, that's what the resolution says.
So, concerning the personal conduct of our, of our personnel and could not be, let me back up a little farther. Whereas a thorough investigation was conducted into those allegations, the board determined that Superintendent McGee had in fact copied content into newsletter articles without properly giving credit to the original author. The board determined that such conduct was a violation of District Policy fifty-two-twenty-three concerning the personal conduct of our personnel and could not be tolerated because it brought negative attention to the district and causes the public to lose faith and trust in the superintendent's leadership.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the whole board heard that part of the resolution where plagiarism will not be tolerated? That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, who'd like to speak next? Mrs. O'Brien?
Um, in one of the paragraphs, it said John came forward. Well, I think John came forward after it was out in the public about, uh, the plagiarism. It's, he didn't admit it until it happened. And I have another, uh, question. Uh, Vicky, when you go to Billings, is the school going to pay for your trip or is John? Since it's John's.
I, I'm paying for myself.
Oh, you, oh, okay, the school's not, the-
The school's not reimbursing me.
And John's not paying you either?
And John's not paying me, I'm paying for myself.
Okay.
Taking my own vehicle, paying my own reservation.
Okay, but I just curious, concerning-
Alright, Mrs. Nye?
Uh, just to follow that, I think that's admirable that you are, but if the majority of your board votes to support this, the school has the right to pay for your designated go. You know, so I just let you know, that should not be a contingent. I would really like to know who submitted this to OPI and just have a man or woman up in our community, I really would. Could anybody, uh, step up and, and, um, own up to this? Are you the same people who hide behind the camera, who hide behind anonymous blogs and destroy this community? Who drive in their minivans around people who are encouraging people to vote and telling them, "Ew!" Who drive past the superintendent and give him the bird when their children, when his children are in the car? Are these the same folks? I think they are. I really do. And I think they're bullies and you've heard me say this over and over again. These people cannot step up and show themselves because they hide behind being anonymous. It's, it's sickening that we're even having to do, to have this discussion further. It is absolutely sickening. We vote, you, 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 you. We all hopefully are registered to vote and vote for who sits up at that table. Right? They make decisions. I don't agree with a hundred percent of them, never will. I believe that if you believe, uh, support a politician a hundred percent, they're probably lying to you. But, they're serving up here, making the best decisions based on the information that they have. This is about local control. I am mad as heck that the state has decided to step into this when we'd already handled this at the, as a, at a community level. It is just, these folks that think that they're doing this for our school, that we're having to churn this up over and over again, that our children are having to hear this, that our children have to see the hate that's on the websites of people again that hide behind anonymous blogs. And you know who you are. You do. We do too. Some of us worry about our tires getting slashed. I, trustee, um, Finley, I- I, Trustee Finley, I, I respect you so much. I think you are honest as honest can be and, and I know that this has been a tough, tough decision. And, and John has put us all in a tough situation here. But this is also about local control and the message that we send to the state that it's okay for a fringe outlier group where they don't get their way at this table, that they can run off to the state, is not right. I wouldn't be saying this if I didn't feel like you had due process and already went through this, but this is like double jeopardy. You're going to charge an employee for the same crime twice? And think about this, there's people around this table that have political ethics complaints against you for how you campaigned. And you're going to cast a stone when you know that you did not follow the state law on how to campaign, open disclosure and that you need to put on who's paying for your advertising? And you're going to cast that stone? Shame on you.
All right, who wants to do this?
I just want, I'm sorry, B.J., yeah, there we go, thank you. Um, just to follow up with her about local control, I love local control and I agree a hundred percent with her, but last meeting, board meeting after we accepted new students, there was six of us sitting in here. If you want local control, show up at these meetings, not for just this stuff. So.
That's all I have to say, okay. Mr. Cornish.
Well, I have a couple of things with the issues that have been already spoken to. First is local control. I think that that was a misjustice for the OPI etc. to go in and judge the situation without, you know, a top for 35 years and had to go into settling disagreements between two people or whatever. But you usually listen to both sides. There's always two sides to every story. And the OPI takes one side, that's crazy. Now, the other thing, John, what John did is plagiarism, it's not good, we don't like it, we don't want it, not a good example. He knows that, we know that, okay? The board did what they thought was right there and, and that's their decision. I taught for 35 years, I went through 27 administrators, 27 and 35, eight of those Since 73. I went to high school and the year, about five years or, yeah, seven years before I retired, they finally changed superintendents. And we were shuffling them out like a deck of cards here. Why? Because no one wanted to stay in this community and fight the stuff that's going on. No one wanted to stay and improve Florence as a community and a school. They wanted to ship out because it was easier. Now, why John's stand? Don't ask me why. I do remember however, the first conversation I had with John when he came in. He liked what he saw in the community, the parks, some of the things going on. And he said, I want to make this my home. Jeepers creepers, that, you know, that's a heck of a sales pitch. I thought that was, you know, but it was, but it's turned out to be true, okay? And the fact that he has, he has done a lot for this school. He is undoubtedly, in my opinion, and I got to judge eight of them, which most of you never have, okay, that he is one of our best superintendents. Now, I'll tell you right now upfront, he's made a couple of decisions that I didn't like personally against me. But you know, I refereed for 25 years, I probably didn't make a call at every coach like either, okay? And so that's what's happened. Now, we, the board has done their thing, you know, penalize John. I mean, you mentioned Judy, that the fact that there, we do not tolerate plagiarism. Well, in the NFL, they don't tolerate a few things either. And when that happens, they fine him 50,000 because they get paid hundreds of thousands. Well, we fined him too. But does the guy still play? Yes, he's not through for life, okay? And this issue, John's paid for. It shouldn't be a life-changing situation. It should be a learning one, but not a life-ending. And I think the school board has done right in what they've done, the message they've sent and OPI is, is way out on a limb is what I feel. Thank you.
Carol Henry. The only thing I didn't like was like you, Pat, going after him. And I did not like this clash of the school board. We are a community, yes, and we, we seem to forget where the basic issue was. He did something wrong, but it seems like everybody's attacking him because he said something. And I, I think if we work together as a community, sure, none of us like this or we don't like that, but to sit as a school board trustee up there and speak against your co-trustee is not good. And I did not like to see that.
That's all you're returning, some of the things that he said?
It doesn't matter.
All right, hold on, hold on.
It shouldn't happen, it shouldn't happen. And we shouldn't have a school board member not voting for warrants either, so.
Mr. Demins.
It's bad.
It does look.
In some ways, I'm an outsider here. I don't live in the school district. I taught school for thirty some years, most of them at Hellgate. I went through a strike in 1980 and two years prior to the strike, you could cut the black negativity in our school with a knife. The negativity we felt as a teacher, as teachers percolated down from a leadership that didn't lead. We never saw the superintendent in the building. We never saw the principal talk to us unless it was for something that he was opposed to. I want to tell you what I've seen in eight years. I've seen a physical plant that has improved by leaps and bounds. I've seen kids treat each other with respect that I never saw at this level at Hellgate. And I love Hellgate. I've seen people with whom I work who have a pretty good salary and feel comfortable with what they're doing. They feel secure. And because they feel secure, that attitude's reflected in the, in this classroom. I have to tell you something that happened to me just two days ago that reflects the positive nature of this school. I didn't see it after having been here for eight years. Coach Boone and I had a meeting, I needed a pen, I needed a clipboard and a piece of paper, I couldn't find any. I went down the halls and I looked at the lockers. There's not a lock on the lockers. Do you know how bad theft is in the school systems in Missoula? Kids trust each other, they trust their teachers, they touch, trust their principals. The leadership in this school is terrific, John, and you're responsible for a lot of it. Now, the last thing I'm going to say is about plagiarism. In 1970s, when I taught school at Hellgate, we caught a student plagiarizing, he failed the class. You know how many students failed the class in history and English in the 70s? Zero. Does that mean they didn't plagiarize? No, they plagiarized, but we as teachers recognized that one failure was not reason to brand him for life and kick him out, so he had to come back the next year and take it, take the class over again. John was suspended for two weeks. I don't know how much money you want, I've tried to figure out what your salary is, but I'll bet it was over $4,000. That's penalty enough in my mind and that's a message that you have sent to your students. It's time to move on for us.
All right, anybody else would like to speak? Because I'm going to let everybody who wants to talk, talk.
I would like to say one thing, you know it so much. My kids all went to school here, I worked here 25 years, I've been on the.
I certainly understand the local and state control issue, that's a valid issue, all of them are valid issues. I, I, I personally want to make sure that, that the board understands, because I keep hearing these accusations of a few individuals, that there's a lot of people, as you know, this is turmoil and negativity in our community and these people are starting it. Well, it wasn't really, yeah, they kind of fueled the fire and I'm not really part of that. But I am part of this community and watching what's going on. And I don't hear it just from a few individuals as far as the negativity. It has, and it doesn't come from just these few individuals. It is with alumni, with faculty, with students, former parents and a lot of people in this community. So, I mean, in my opinion, maybe you felt like you dealt with this one way. As a man myself and coming from watching my father run schools for years, I personally think in, in a heartbeat, not only multiple actions, but if I were in your position and did what you did, there's no way that I would not address the entire middle school that probably can understand because lower schools didn't, and try and do a profound speech that would actually address the students and the teachers to really assess what you think is, is right and wrong instead of some letter that's in the corner of a faculty review that I kind of write off as really nothing that is an apology. It doesn't really mean much to me. What means much to me is what your words are in person, not only to teachers, but to students, which I would like to see more of and walking around and addressing students and be, and becoming more personal. So I'm not going to try and take any sides of it, I'm just setting up as a leader and really watching good schools run for years. And I really appreciate your service for years, I really don't have anything against you as a person, but I do know in this situation that I do feel that there could have been some more done as a person for yourself, whether it's losing money or, or you guys dealing with it as a board. It's obviously hurt our community and people are, you know, upset about it, but, and then hopefully we can move on and become a strong community because I'm not going anywhere, my kids aren't going anywhere, I love the teachers in this school dramatically, we have a fantastic school here. I, I mean, I just can't tell you enough from all the years I've been here, how much I like it. And I'm not going anywhere and that's all I have to say about the situation.
Thank you. All right, so I think unless anybody else has something they need to say?
Oh, Ms. Corolla. Hi, my name's Flori Torrella. Because my name's Flori Torrella, practically everybody in this room knows me, I've been working at this school for 32 years. I've went through a lot of administrators, lot of superintendents. And one that just gets under my skin, Ms. McGee, he just gets to me at times. When I try to go and say, let's do this or let's do that, he is over here on this side of the building, on the street, working with administrators, working with teachers, seeing students. I've even threatened to move his desk over here. Because, you know, I have to literally pin him down to get some of our reports done. But we were good as a team. And I can tell you straight up, of all the superintendents that I've been around, he's done more for this facility, he's done more for our technology, he's done more for this school than I can't even tell you how many other superintendents. But like I said, he gets to me, but I keep plugging in there because I'm not going anywhere. And he's probably going to just kick my rear. But I'm just saying that he did wrong. He owed up to it. The board went and took action. And why are we here? God help us. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm Joyce Schrader. I just wanted to say that the problem in the community did not start with this situation. It was there long before that. And I agree that it was created by a few people who are bullies and, you know, the rest of us are working hard and have other things to do, trying to volunteer in our community and make the community a better place. So maybe we haven't taken enough time to really stand up for the board and for John. The plagiarism issue is, is in a long line of, of things that have happened in this community by these few people. And I want to know, can I ask a direct question to one of board members?
You can certainly try.
Um, Mr. Reynolds, did you contact OPI?
Did I contact OPI? Any way to get this, are you saying that I?
No, I'm asking you a question.
OPI did not contact.
There's a difference between a question and a statement.
And I'm sorry, what people need to understand here, I appreciate, I'm sure John appreciates what you're all saying, but you're, you're hearing late.
I'm asking.
I told you the answer, I did not, I did not contact OPI and tell them to hang John McGee for plagiarism.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
That's the answer to my question.
So may I, may I speak on the, on the, on this topic?
Um, let me finish the public comment and then we'll go around the table again. So anybody else? Okay, so let's go around the table one more time, Mr. Reynolds.
I, I under, I can see where you guys are going here, but on the, the reality of what's happening here is OPI, regardless of how you guys believe they were contacted and what's happening, voted or went before the Montana Board of Public Education and recommended that they, they had the choice. Board of Education, do you guys feel that the school, local level took care of this or do you feel that they didn't? Our recommendation is they did not. That was the OPI. I'm sure the video's out there, everybody look at it, pretty obvious. Both, the, the vote was unanimous, six to nothing with zero discussion on the issue.
Our vote.
It was a vote to have a hearing.
Exactly, and that's, and that's where we're at. So we are now at a hearing stage and I would suggest that, I know it's a long ways to go, but if you guys truly feel that way, that would definitely be the place to go and put your support for Mr. McGee.
Please contact the school board association?
What's that?
Did you contact the Montana School Board Association?
I talked to the Montana School Board Association numerous times, but nothing to do with plagiarism.
Not regarding this issue?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you tell me why Kevin had his own personal meeting with OPI and why John wasn't allowed?
I'm Kobe Brown.
All right, so.
Kevin, he paid for your campaign, Mr. Reynolds.
Kevin and I went first grade together, played football together, but I don't know, I'm not sure where you're going with that.
Did you ever plagiarize a report?
Did I? I don't know if I did.
How hard is it? I mean, I went to school. How many ever wrote a report and did?
Can I continue?
Enter the, enter in something. If you don't raise your hands, you're lying.
Well, all I'm saying is it's now out of the local level. I know how you guys feel about this, but it's now OPI and the Montana School Boards. And that, that people don't understand the severity of where this is going. And so many statements that are being made towards OPI are pretty severe. I don't think that he's due to be too impressed with some of the things that have been said here. Which is fine. No, let me finish here, but my bottom line is, the hearing happening, it's, it's well beyond past this. Bottom line, OPI did not feel that adequate statute was taken upon this. They asked the Board of Education to carry on, they agreed to it. So that's where we're at, it's plain and simple. So if you want to continue on this, go to Billings, state your support.
Do you have any idea how it got to OPI?
That'd be a question for OPI.
Yeah, can you tell us why part of your watchdog group showed up?
Who's the watchdog group? Can you tell names?
Kevin.
Kevin?
Yeah, how, how Kevin ended up in a meeting with OPI?
You're first to the person talking about plagiarism, I don't, I'm not, I'm not calling this.
Well, you should know, it's part of your group. Who's what group? What do they call it? What's our name? Even a liar, I don't know what they call it.
Guys, okay, we're going to stop that, okay? Mr. McGee, your turn.
Well, I just want to make sure, you know, you stated old guy, these people want to get upset with some of the things that are being said. Now, I'm very personally involved in this issue. So much so that I've been involved with my attorney and with old guy's attorney and with the Board of Public Education's attorney on stipulated agreements on evidence, what evidence is going to be allowed in. You are a witness for OPI on this. Okay?
Okay.
And when we talk about evidence, I was extremely offended by the fact that they go to. And when we talk about evidence, I was extremely offended by the fact that they go to a website here in Florence to grab most of their information. Tell them it's a website, that it's a website that twists and turns information around to every corner. I mean, it was sickening to me to think that we have a situation that's serious in our school system that has facts laid out forward in a very formal process, and no one, no one bothered to step up and check to see what facts are true and what facts are not. Now, these things have been told to the attorney for old guy, and these juniors are very aware of it. And my fact is that, yeah, we're going down, I'm going down to Billings, and I gotta address the Board of Public Ed. And I'm not one that is trying to hide from consequences here. I'm not one that's trying to shuck my responsibilities. Because on numerous cases, numerous cases, I requested with old guy, I requested with the attorney of the Board of Public Ed, this thing to be resolved. I would take my lumps, I'd accept my responsibilities, we can move on if we could stop the embarrassment that it's going to bring in another media cycle against the school district and against this community. And that just couldn't happen.
John, you're gonna get your time. You're acting like I'm the judge.
I will get my time.
I know, that's coming up Thursday, and I think we should carry on with this and get moving on. The discussion happened to be whether we're voting to send Vicki over and support. And I've, you know, I think if I've made my point clear, you've asked, I've answered your questions honestly, and if that's not enough for you, I'm sorry. And if you wanna carry on, carry on, but I think this topic needs to go ahead and finish your three, finish your votes, and we know where it's going, and let's move on.
Okay, so anybody else have anything else they wanna say? Because I want it to be known that everybody got a chance to talk. Okay, so let's, I'm sorry, I think we're gonna go with Mr. Reynolds calling for a question, okay? So, all those in favor of the motion to take the resolution to the hearing in Billings that the school board feels that we've handled the issue and that we don't care for the interference and that we are sending Vicki as our representative? So, all in favor of that motion? Aye. Opposed? Okay. All right. So, thank you, everybody, for your input. We are gonna go on now to high school principal reports.
Okay, well, as we all know, school's starting. We're doing pretty good. We have a very, very full schedule. I have lots of kids in all my classes, and I have a lot of kids even in the Montana Digital Academy this year. So, it's gonna be a challenge for me this year because I have quite a few kids that I have to monitor. And it's just, it's a push towards taking online classes, you know? I've been working with you guys ever since my first year here, so I have, I think, really close to sixty enrollments. Several of those kids are multiple enrollments, but sixty total enrollments in classes. Some are credit recovery, some are original credit. My encouragement is that all kids take one online class at least in high school because they'll need that experience for college, they'll need that experience for their careers. So, we're doing that. Tomorrow night's open house, so I encourage everybody to come. High school's gonna do things a little bit differently this year. Parents will have homerooms posted for their students in the front window. Parents will go to the homerooms and they'll get the schedules of their students and then try to follow that abbreviated schedule, just get the gist of what each class is like. So, they'll have that for about a five-minute class and a three-minute passing period. And then students, or the teachers will be able to, or the parents will be able to visit with teachers after that for the remainder of the time. And open house is from six to eight tomorrow. Homerooms, or homecoming is coming up at the end of the month. We have several people working hard towards that. I've been working with Donna Press Street, our chair advisor. She's got a lot of that stuff going. And then we have Mrs. Greer that's helping out this year with the parade. And Jane Lyles will help her out a little bit. She's just too busy to handle it all on her own. So, those things are starting to move forward. I talked to Pat already today. We talked about probably not doing the bonfire this year because it's so damn dry out. I don't know if you guys noticed, nice big fire up on the mountains across the valley, dumping smoke in there today. So, just that heat just keeps kicking up and kicking the fires up, so we don't wanna have to deal with that this year. And I don't wanna have a huge pile of wood sitting next to the football field for six months before we actually burn it. So, that's kinda what's going on. We'll have dress-up day stuff posted. We'll have the theme for the homecoming and all that ready and posted on the website so everybody'll know what that is, that way the brave people know and everything else. So, just getting it all ready and lined up. And then on Friday this week, we have a big assembly coming in, and it's a positive climate. It ties in with our NBI, or Montana Behavior Initiative. And so, they're bringing in a huge video and sound system. And there's going to be an assembly for the younger kids, but then for the high school also, we'll have a different assembly. And so, it'll be a lot of fun. They've been tying in a lot of video, so a lot of popular music, country, rock, rap, heavy metal, everything you can think of. And the kids really got into it last year, so we brought them back this year.
Okay? Thank you. Mr. Merrill.
Yeah. All activities are at full speed. Our cross-country co-op with Big Sky's doing very well. We have three boys and two girls. It's the third year on our third-year contract, basically. We'll have to decide if we're gonna continue with that. I think those are great numbers for kids to participate across country. We have forty-two boys out for football, thirty-some girls out for volleyball, twelve girls out for cheerleading. Good numbers, good healthy numbers. This week in Alkin Country, we have the volleyball team going to Lyle already on Thursday night. First game's at four, five-thirty and seven at home. They will compete against Big Fork on Saturday at one, two-thirty and four. The football team's got a tough battle. They're gonna be going to Big Fork on Friday night. And Monday night, our JBLers will host Hamilton's JBL. That's had down here a long time, so it's gonna be kind of fun, four thirty on Monday night. Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Hall.
Okay, things down in the primary are October start. We had our first parent SPTT meeting tonight. And if there's anybody out in the audience who has elementary fees and is interested in being part of that, with kids growing up into the middle school, our parent organization is leaning and we could use all the support from the community and those endeavors to bring activities for the kids, for the kids in our school. The Cookie Dough fundraiser, which is our biggest fundraiser, starts on Friday. As in the past, that money has been earmarked to improve the playground. Last year, some of that money was also spent to bring iPads to the teachers. So, we were able to purchase twenty-eight iPads.